Is this on? I'd like to call the USD 305 Board Meeting to order. If you'll please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any additions or corrections to our agenda?
Yes, Madam President. Each of you should have a personnel addendum at your places. And so in addition to that, I would ask that we remove item 7D, 2015-16 Salary and Work Conditions for Certified Staff.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve this?
I move approval of the agenda as amended.
Thank you.
I second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign, so moved 6-0. Moving on to our recognitions and presentations with Jennifer Bradford-Burnham.
Good evening. Each year Salina USD 305 is honored to recognize two instructors who have been selected as District Teachers of the Year. The awards are sponsored by the Kansas State Department of Education and affiliated with the National Teacher of the Year Program. Semi-finalists representing Region 1 will be announced at the Kansas Teacher of the Year Awards Luncheon September 12, and state finalists are named in November. I am pleased to introduce to you our Secondary Teacher of the Year, Deirdre Hoff. Deirdre received her Bachelor's Degree in Education and American Ethnic Studies from Kansas State University, and completed her Master's Degree at Emporia State University. She has taught history for 10 years at Central High School and is chairperson for the Social Studies Department. At this time, I'd like to invite Deirdre to the podium.
Hi. I just want to take up a couple of minutes to really thank you for this recognition and the chance to represent Salina secondary teachers. I'm a product of USD 305, and the hard work and the dedications of the teachers who work tirelessly to create strong learning communities are evident throughout. I've seen and experienced both as a student and a teacher, the sacrifices of time and family that USD 305 makes to create a caring academic environment for our students. The teachers and the staff in the district were dedicated professionals, and I'm proud to help carry on the tradition of excellence that's found here. I'm looking forward to the opportunity to continue my professional skills through this award. That's pretty cool. And I hope to share what I learn with my colleagues when I get back. I'm truly honored to be nominated as the District Secondary Teacher of the Year. Thanks.
I'm also pleased to introduce to you our Elementary Teacher of the Year, Kathy Cash. Kathy received her Bachelor's Degree in Music Education from the University of Northern Colorado, and earned her Master's Degree in Music Education from Kansas State University. She has taught at Husner for two years. I'd like to invite Kathy to the podium.
I would also like to start this evening with a big thank you to those people who are here this evening and supported me for this huge honor. And since I am music teacher in elementary, if you missed out on the first day, I like to have people involved. And in my class, it's very much a participatory classroom. And so I would like to start with everybody, please standing. Now, just like students, sometimes we feel a little out of our box. And that's okay, because it's okay to put ourselves out there, and it's okay to fail. And our goal is to enjoy the trials and the tribulations of excelling and failing. And in music class, we try to encourage everyone to participate. Sometimes it's out of our box, and so if that's you, that's okay, because the person next to you might feel the same way. And so if we're here, and we're here to support each other, that's the important thing. Now, people in the audience, Mrs. Munson is also going to be giving you some, and so that way, we're all in this together. As I get up my music, basically, what we would do is the teacher always does something, and the students imitate. And this piece I'm going to have you guys imitate, I will be leading, and you guys just basically do what I do or shadow. Eventually, you let the students lead, but the first time, they're always imitating. So this is leading to the creativity aspect, where they can come up on the spot and improvise the movements, and you don't have to sing, you're just going to do what I do. If my technology works. Does everyone have one, except for me? All right. Thank you. So first, we have to figure out the time signature of the song. So we kind of feel the music. Ready? Feel it. Then eventually, the song keeps going, and we have fun, and then it goes quiet again. And then a student could lead, and then on the improv section, when it's loud and the jazz musician is playing, we get to have fun, and we get to have fun through the classroom. But we're moving still in time and through space, being safe, making sure, if you notice, these could actually hurt. And we experiment making the whipping sound, so that we know not to be that in class. And so thank you all for participating. But before you sit down, I would just like to say, many people think that music is just about emotion and expression, which it is. It is an excellent outlet for those things, but is also about social connectivity, kinetic, which you just experienced, and cognitive development, as well as spatial awareness. The impact of music on the brain and development has been researched greatly since the mid-'90s. Music is a means to open up creativity, just like you experienced. In our music classes, we always begin by imitation, which I mentioned, and then we allow students to explore the movement or the notes for themselves in order to find their voice or their pathways. This experience may start with the students not knowing where to begin. But once they are willing to give themselves over to the discovery and exploration, it is truly amazing where it takes them. I would like to thank you all for this opportunity to share my passion, even if it is just a small amount. I am very fortunate to work in a field where if I have the opportunity to ignite the power to change lives through music. Thank you. There will be no more playing in the ribbons for the rest of the meeting. They take all the fun away.
Oh, sorry. They're very entertaining, aren't they?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Kathy, I had up here, I have seen some research from Remo Percussion Company that when they do drumming, drum sessions, that heart rates actually adjust and become more or less the same. Is that interesting stuff? Interesting stuff. So that connectivity that you're talking about is got a lot of scientific support. So thank you.
And we have some special gifts and recognitions to present to you at this time. We greatly appreciate the support our local businesses give to this program. In the gift bag, you will find a custom-made watch co-sponsored by Randy Johnson, Justin's, and Mary Kindlesbarker, Coldwell Banker, Antrim Piper Realtors, and a gift certificate donated by Martinelli's. The second envelope contains the H.E. and Irma Lee Nuss Teacher of the Year Awards. Each of you receives a $250 check in recognition of your efforts on behalf of Salina Schools. This is the 24th year for these awards, made possible by the Nuss family. H.E. Nuss was the Assistant Principal at Central High for 10 years and a Kansas educator for 28 years. Irma Lee Nuss was a librarian at USD 305 for 11 years and a Kansas educator for 37 years. We greatly appreciate Mrs. Nuss's generosity and support of the Teacher of the Year Program. Lastly, the Board of Education presented an engraved plaque as a memento of your selection as Teachers of the Year. Your pictures will hang in this meeting room through the year, and your names have been engraved on the perpetual plaque on the wall. Congratulations, we couldn't ask for better representatives of the teaching profession or of USD 305. Pictures.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
I'll see you in a couple of weeks. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Both of you.
Congratulations.
which include the minutes of the August 11, 2015 regular meeting, our Personnel Report, our Treasurers Report, our Investment Report, our Journal Entries, and approving our incumbents' listing, which includes Eagle Technologies and the amount of $31,279.76 for software maintenance and monitoring of backup slash resource system. Can I get a motion to approve these consent agenda items as presented?
I salute.
Okay, can I get a second?
I second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign, so moved 6-0. Moving on in our agenda item to our public forum, if anyone would like to address the board, now would be the time. Nobody is rushing up, so I'm going to move on to our action agenda items, starting with Ms. Exline and the Elementary Reading Kit proposal.
I visited with you at the last board meeting about a proposal to purchase school-wide units for one unit of elementary reading instruction at every grade level, K through 5. And I'm here back tonight to ask for your approval to do just that. You should have noted in your board packet that between last meeting and this meeting, we had several teachers call and say, okay, wait a minute, are we going to get these for our special education classrooms? And so we did add three additional units that were the units that they selected that they really wanted to have. The updated amount is $26,880. So with that, are there any additional questions that you have, clarifications that I can make beyond what I presented last week?
I move we approve the purchase of schoolwide reading fundamentals units of study in the amount of $26,880, as presented.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Would anybody like to discuss before we vote? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign, so moved 6-0. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We will have excited teachers.
Moving on in our action agenda item to Safe Routes, I'm sorry, Safe Routes to School with Mr. Knowlton.
Bring before you tonight an issue that the board has dealt with for about three years now, I think. This is the Safe Routes to School that was proposed. I think the board entered into agreement with the city in May of 2013. Just an idea, on the map there, you see Lakewood Drive right here. Here's the walking bridge. Lakewood School would be up in that area. At the time, the board approved participating in that, the projected cost of that project was to be around $59,000 with a 10% matching between, or 20% matching between the city and the school, so it would have been a 10% matching on our part. That was in the planning stage for quite a while. July 22 of 2015, KDOT opened up three bids, and those bids came in, the low bid came in at $113,000, which is nearly double what the projected cost of that project was back in 2013. That exceeded the maximum Safe Route to Schools federal funding grant. There's a cap on that grant of $65,000, which basically left the difference between the $65,000 and the low bid, plus a few contingency costs. So that difference would be, well, our half of the difference would be $27,316. So the difference between the grant and the actual cost is split halfway now between the city and the school district. The city did approve this yesterday at their commission meeting, and I come before you tonight to ask your approval to continue with that by providing matching funds of Any questions?
A quick question. I know that the plan for Iron Street is to have walking, biking, multi-use path sidewalk to Delaware, and I cannot remember, is there, do we have, do you know if there's a plan to connect that to the southern end of this path?
Are you saying connect here on up?
Basically, there's the block from Delaware to Lakewood Park, I believe, that I don't think is in the city's plan on Iron.
I'm not aware of one. I'm not saying that there isn't one, I'm not aware.
Okay, well, that's part of the next step then, I guess.
Yeah, I think Dr. Black, in reference to that, I believe, if they were to go to Delaware, we would still be several blocks away from this area at that point in time, connecting it from Iron to this location.
Be one block, I think.
Yeah, in that vicinity. I know it's within, but I don't think the connection's there yet. It doesn't appear to be.
Well.
Anne?
Can you give us an idea why it was twice as much as we expected?
You know, it's interesting, I went back through some files, and in 2009, there was an estimate of what this would cost according to KDOT standards, and it was estimated at $115,000 back then. So I don't know if the estimate in 2013 was just, didn't consider that KDOT requires a lot more prep and a lot more, or, and also, the price of concrete, as Chris Upson will tell you, is really going out of sight. So I think some costs increase. When you plan, when you plan any project and wait two years to implement it, your accuracy's going to be compromised.
Was this a 10-foot wide?
It is 10-foot wide, yes.
Concrete, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Any additional questions, or I'll entertain a motion.
I'd be honored to make that motion. And by the way, the good work of the bike group got us bike lanes downtown, so with that, I move that we approve moving forward with the Safe Routes to Schools project with a commitment of matching funds in the amount of $27,316.
Okay, I have a motion and a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion before we vote? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so moved 6-0. Thank you.
Thank you. I will inform the city tomorrow and hope that the implementation phase goes faster than the planning stage.
Moving on in our action agenda item to our Property Taxation Policy Resolution with Ms. Peters.
Good evening. Two weeks ago, we held our budget hearing, and the board adopted our budget and approved it by motion. And three days later, we were notified by the State Department, along with all the other districts in Kansas, that House Bill 2142 requires a formal resolution by the board if taxes levied exceed the CPI from, over the prior year. Consumer Price Index was 1.6%, and you recall that the second publication, that Bill went over at the budget hearing, and that I also went over at the work session, is actually the form that shows that calculation, and we're required to publish that in the newspaper, which was published on the 18th. So we've done all of the steps except the formal resolution, and the State Department sent out a note that said, even if you've already had your hearing and approved by motion, they wanted us to go back and do a formal resolution, and then file that with the State Department and the county clerk, so that we're in accordance with statute. So that's why I'm here tonight, is to get that last piece, so that I recommend that you approve the resolution as presented, so that I can file that with the clerk and the State Department.
Okay. And I need someone to actually read the resolution, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Dr. Black?
I would love to read it. Madam President, I move the adoption of the following resolution, Resolution Number 0215, a resolution by the Board of Education of the Salina Public Schools Unified School District Number 305, Saline County, Kansas, expressing the property taxation policy of Unified School District Number 305, Saline County, Kansas, with respect to financing the annual budget for 2015-2016. Whereas, KSA 79-2925B, as amended, provides that a levy of property taxes to finance the 2015-2016 budget of Unified School District Number 305, exceeding the amount levied to finance the 2014-2015 budget of Unified School District Number 305, as adjusted to reflect changes in the Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers for the calendar year 2014, be authorized by a resolution. Now, therefore, be it resolved by United School District Number 305, that the 2015-2016 budget with a levy of property taxes exceeding the amount levied in 2014-2015, as adjusted pursuant to KSA 79-2925B, as amended, is hereby adopted, adopted this 25th day of August 2015 by Unified School District Number 305, Saline County, Kansas.
Okay, I have a motion, and you want to like a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion before we vote? Seeing none, all those in favor, oops, sorry, I'm so sorry.
Sorry. I was just going to ask, is this, this is a brand-new statute that they just passed? Or is it an old statute that they're re-?
It's from the 2015 House Bill 2142, and it was on the last day of the session, is what I understand. It was my understanding that it was there, and nobody realized it was there, and now they've realized it's there, and now we have to do this.
I guess it probably wouldn't really help anything to include a note with it saying this is unnecessary, but.
Like I told, like I told Leslie Corbett, who was in my office today, you're trying to apply logic to our legislation.
We could certainly add that little addendum to the bottom there, and I'm sure it will get everyone's attention.
Yeah, right.
It will, in fact, affect change, but I strongly doubt it, but that's okay. If you'd like verse 2, we can sure put an addendum.
It's all right.
Any other?
We did modify a prior document that went in the paper, just to make sure that folks understood, on the mill levy increase, that it actually did not include the bond and interest, and what was the other one?
The general.
Yes, exactly. So, you know, we could certainly do that if you'd like, but anyway, for what it's worth.
Any additional discussion before we vote? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign, so moved 6-0. Moving on to our discussion agenda, which we have none, so we will then talk about our committee reports and upcoming dates of importance, which include Saturday, September 12, our Teacher of the Year Luncheon at the Salina Country Club; Monday, September 21, is our Stewart Groundbreaking at 10:00 a.m.; Thursday, October 1, is the KASB Fall Education Summit at Webster at 11:15; Thursday, November 12, is the SHESC Legislative Luncheon at 10:00 a.m. Anne, would you like to start us off with our committee reports, if you have any?
I attended the, a meeting at Heartland Programs, and I'm going to let Ms. Branderd and Mrs. Trickle talk more about it, since they have much more experience there than I do.
Way to pass the buck.
Two things. The Dog Park is up for discussion tomorrow on a vote at the Salina Parks and Rec Advisory Board Meeting, so I know everybody will be there. And, just kidding. And the other thing I did want to bring up, I attended the City Commission meeting last night regarding the annexation of property out south on Ohio and Schelling and that area, and I think Mike, you were there, weren't you? Or wasn't you? It was still 9:30. I didn't stay that long, but I only bring it up because the subject came up of expansion of schools, and whether or not a new school would have to be put in. They were talking a possible total of, I believe, 500-plus new houses, and would that, how would that affect the school district? And I guess I, for a moment, I cringed, because I, you know, we just passed this bond issue, and we've got all the work going on, and the discussion of another school hasn't, you know, that's, that's out there. But I guess, when we talk about expanding, I hope that people realize it's not just streets and lights and things like that, but then there's also the fact that we have to make sure that we have students getting to a school, so with that, I'll, we'll let it take over.
I think there were several of us that attended the Salina Education Foundation Breakfast this morning, and the breakfast was delightful, but even more delightful was seeing all the students do their presentations for us, and it's always a joy to see how that funding is spent and, and what they managed to do with that. So that's all I have.
Anne referred to a meeting at Heartland. Heartland is often asked to complete surveys. The federal government has its requirements, and our job at this particular point was to attempt to evaluate how our Board of Education, which is actually the primary governing board of Heartland, interacts and relates to Heartland programs. So we visited about a number of questions, and a report was created, and then sent out to all of us to take a look at and determine whether or not we agreed with what had been said, and if we had any additions and so on, and that has been turned back to Lisa Larson. I believe we all had that opportunity, so.
And she will be sending it to, on, to where it needs to go. But they undergo now some type of evaluation about every three or four years, and they really try to uncover everything.
That's true.
And I think sometimes the visiting team even tries to seek out little things that might be wrong. We, I got a hold of a picky one one year, and so we have that coming down the pipe for the district. I also attended the Smokey Hill meeting, and they were just talking about the upcoming dates and things like that, and told how Cornerstone had, had indeed opened, and that, of course, we are leasing space to Cornerstone, and we have it leased for two years. And the first quarterly report from Cornerstone is going to be effective September 30, and then it'll, then there'll be reports every three months thereafter.
Anything else? Mary Ann?
Okay. I would like to offer, you may notice that one of our board members is missing. He's a new father, as I understand. Lily Noel was born on Friday night.
Friday evening.
So we wish him all the best, his new parents, so I know he was getting very anxious to have her be here, so, very cute little kid. You want to?
Absolutely, and I believe his wife was even more anxious.
I'm sure she was. I'm sure she was.
For the little one to be here, but I tell you, a lot of, lot of really exciting things happening in USD 305. Obviously, we're off and running, we've been two weeks today. Two weeks ago today, school started. And it's kind of interesting, because, you know, I've had the opportunity to be in all the schools since school started, it's been, it's been a great start. It's been positive, a lot of energy. The kids are very, very happy and excited to be back in school as our teachers, and so it's, it's just been a really a great start. A few minimum problems, not problems that are necessarily unexpected for the start of the school year. We've had some, some, basically, areas we need to be flexible with concerning construction, but we're rolling through that, and thankfully, I think, and I've got a couple of those I report on, but nothing that is in any way taking away from the learning process in our schools. And so we're very, very fortunate that, with our staff, that they continue to be flexible and, and be prepared for just about any eventuality that might, might come their way. So preliminary report on enrollment numbers, and this is very, very preliminary at this point, and, and as you know, I mean, with the school funding, we don't necessarily have quote-unquote "the count day" anymore, but, but we are still continuing to monitor for data purposes what our enrollment will be. Quite honestly, we don't know what's going to happen in two years with the new school funding formula- Quite honestly, we don't know what's going to happen in two years when the new school funding formula is written. And so we're going to continue to collect all the data that we've collected in the past, and we'll forward that information to, to the Kansas State Department of Education. But a bit, maybe, Dr. Black, to your point, when you start looking at, you know, the need for another school, just to give you an idea on where we are with numbers, elementary schools this year, and this is just headcount, not FTE, we had three thousand three hundred and seventy-nine students enrolled, and this was as of last Friday. Three thousand three hundred and seventy-nine. Last year, we had three thousand four hundred and four elementary students enrolled. This year, as far as our two middle schools, we have sixteen hundred and seven students enrolled at our two middle schools. Last year, we had fifteen hundred and sixty-eight enrolled in our two middle schools. And this year, we have two thousand and ninety-seven high school students enrolled in our, in our two high schools, which I say are two high schools, but that also includes Salina West, and it also includes Opportunity Now. And last year, we had two thousand and seventy. And so overall, we're up about forty-one students from last year, preliminarily. And we'll kind of have to see where everything shakes out. We had quite a bit of movement, anyway.
Do you know offhand, and you probably don't, but if, offhand, do you know where Coronado is in terms of?
It's kind of low, I think.
Capacity?
In terms of being at capacity?
Yeah.
I don't have that in front of me right now. I tell you what, most.
Because last night, they said, oh, well, Coronado has room, and.
Well, what's interesting, though, when you start talking about who has room, I mean, when you look at our elementary schools, they're all relatively close in number. They're all within, I think, fifty students from top to bottom. And so I thought that was really kind of interesting because they're very, very equalized in terms of enrollment. Now, when you start talking capacity, and I know all of our schools, when they were designed, they were designed as four-section elementary schools. So when you start talking about capacity, you know, how many students can we have? At one point in time, when Ken Kennedy was here, we had this conversation, and actually, those schools, when they were designed, were actually designed to be in excess of about five hundred students. Now, that being said, I think that some of our teachers and our administrators, building administrators, would argue that we can house that many students, but things have also changed in the last, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty years in terms of the types of needs that our students are coming to us with. And the reason being is that now we require smaller learning spaces. That wasn't the case in our community fifteen years ago even. And so that changed the uses of our building. And so, you know, it's difficult to say what is capacity now. I would venture to say that we could stand to grow more than thirty-three hundred and seventy-nine elementary students before we have a need to build another elementary school. What we would, what that would necessitate, however, is to relook at our attendance boundaries once again. And so we would need to adjust our attendance boundaries accordingly if something like that were to occur. But it would have to be a significant event that would bring a large number of families into our community with a large number of students.
See, I think that particular development was talking about a hundred and eighty houses, and then the expanded property that is now owned by the county would be another four hundred.
Right.
So they were under the impression that Stewart was at a max, but that Coronado could take more, and I don't know where they got.
Well, if you recall, and we looked at those numbers, and again, without having the numbers in front of me, but when we looked at this last year even, you know, it was interesting because the numbers did balance, but Stewart at one time, when we went to, when we changed our attendance boundary, Sunset went really low. And then in the last, gosh, four years, they jumped up like a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty kids. And so it was interesting because the population shift, I think, where we thought they were going to be moving north to south, didn't really occur. You call it what happened when, the first year, to the numbers at Oakdale. And we actually had to tweak the attendance boundaries last year to adjust that, and to have some of those families of students who were in the Oakdale region go either to Cotton or to Metalark, and that helped balance the situation at Oakdale. So interestingly, the numbers didn't materialize that we thought they would at Coronado and Stewart. So I would tend to agree that there probably is room at both Stewart and Coronado. Schilling is getting very, very, Schilling's numbers are up. Sunset's numbers are up. So it seems like the population has shifted, it seems, to the south and west portions of our community as opposed to south and east. So I thought that was interesting. But in terms of capacity and growth, I still believe that we can stand to grow more before we have a need to, to build another elementary school.
And I'm sorry, not to linger on this point, but are you consulted pretty regularly? When, for instance, the city or the county are talking about adding development, do they, are you contacted?
No, I'm not, unfortunately.
Because that seems like that would be an important point to consider.
I wouldn't argue the point. I wouldn't argue the point. That is important, especially, we're talking about bringing more families into our community. Absolutely.
Thanks, and I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
That's fine. And so enrollment, you know, is up about forty kids. It's, you know, we'll see what happens when we get a month or so down the road, and things kind of settle in. But if that, if that holds true, then we'll have, I don't think, our last five years continuing increases in enrollment. Each year, I think, we're averaging about thirty to forty increase, and so it's kind of nice to see that upward trend in the last five years. Salina West Learning Academy Alternative School, their enrollment is now sixty-one students, and, which is nice to see that increase as well. From the standpoint that it's good to see that we have a program that's meeting the needs of students who will gain from that, from that particular program. And so with that, I mean, I think they finished up going into the year after last year's graduates, I think, they're at twenty to twenty-five. And so that being the case, we have about thirty-five of those students that are new to that program. And so I had the opportunity to visit there last week, and things seem to be going very, very well there also. So it's been a good move, and we would like to continue to see that program grow in enrollment as well. I know we, when the board first adopted that concept, we constructed the building, designed the building to have capacity as high as a hundred and twenty students, and so we still have room to grow. And there are, there is, continues to be room available for students who may choose that type of learning environment. And so we're very excited to see that number continue to grow as well. Couple of other items just to report on this year, and I shared this at the Back to School Assembly, the Staff Assembly, a couple of weeks ago, but we do have a district safety committee in place this year. We're really focusing on workplace safety and ensuring that all of our employees, teachers, custodians, food service, clerical, whatever position they occupy, that they are in a safe working environment. And so we're doing some things. We're trying to highlight different themes periodically. Right now, our theme is on slips, trips, and falls, and really wanting to educate our employees about, you know, being careful when they, you know, not climbing on chairs with roller coasters, with coasters on them necessarily. You might want to get a stepladder, and doing some things that we can do to make sure we minimize accidents. We absolutely want to minimize accidents. At the same time, we're always evaluating our facilities to make sure all facilities are safe. And so we continue to do those things. We have a promotional campaign. We're sending information out to employees and then just general reminders in terms of, you know, we want you to be safe and to make sure that we make good decisions as it pertains to each of our respective positions. And we'll also have some training that will go along with that as well. So we continue to move forward with some ideas on that. We've already, this summer, went through, evaluated our food service program in several locations, replaced really outdated equipment that, I mean, my goodness, I think they had a dough-making machine, and back in the day, I mean, this was like back in the day, and that was, it was really archaic. And I'm like, my gosh, you have to have, you have to be lifting weights to be able to run that thing. So it really, though, some of that equipment needed to be updated and changed, and it was amazing. The food service workers were like, my gosh, they have modern equipment out there now. So we've really, that's been very, very helpful as well. So on the bond construction side, we do have, you've already announced it, that our next groundbreaking is at Stewart Elementary. We had a successful one last week at Schilling, and those are always fun to do that. The kids come out, and they enjoy, and the kid sang for his last, last time at Schilling, and so it was a nice event. Stewart on September twenty-first, Sunset will be our last elementary school on October nineteenth. Then other than that, we have, the two remaining groundbreakings will be our two high schools, Central High and South High. And so we're in the process, myself and Jennifer Bradford-Burnin, in having preliminary conversations with our principals in terms of how we want to roll out the groundbreakings for our two high schools, which will be October, Octoberish, November, some in that, some more in that timeline. But as far as construction is concerned right now, I shared with you that our staff has had to be, has been required to be flexible as we started through the new school year. At Oakdale Elementary School, their office was not completed when school started, and I was over there about every other day to see what progress they were making, and they are making progress. I believe they're planning on doing the punch list on the Oakdale office tomorrow. And so we're hopeful that they can occupy the office latter part of this week, and so that, part of that project will be completed. We also have the, oh, the Meadowlock Ridge EBD Special Education Suite on the west side of the building has been occupied. It's still in process, there's some things that they need to complete, but they really needed the space, and they couldn't afford to be, not have that space available, so they went ahead and occupied that. But they are in the process of still completing those things that need to be completed while the students are still there. And so it's not going to pose any concern, things that need to be completed. Some of the stuff that they do need to do, we'll probably wait until we get the next break and complete it at that time. And so we believe that we have all the kids back where they need to be at this point in time, and things are moving smoothly. Other than that, you can go around the projects that are under construction, a lot of activity. Cottonwood is moving, moving forward very, very quickly. The storm shelter is pretty much completed. They were putting on the exterior bricklay, the bricklaying, the surface on the exterior. And so it's just kind of interesting watching that, especially if you have some time and we kind of know what's happening, watch them put those pre-cast slabs in place. I mean, those things are huge, and tremendous cranes and twenty thousand pound slabs, and they just drop those things in place and kind of bolt them in. So it's really interesting. It's an interesting process to be able to watch and observe. But again, all other projects are moving forward according to schedule. And then one other item, had the opportunity, and I see Jonathan National is in the audience today, met with Jonathan and his, the Salina NEA Executive Board, as well as with Vice President Nedra Elbow, and just to talk about just positive relationships for USD three oh five and the vision for USD three oh five. And had an excellent meeting. I really appreciate Jonathan's leadership from Salina NEA moving forward. But one of the ideas that was shared, and I think we're going to revisit with the board about doing this, was developing a collaborative partnership toward how we communicate with our legislature. And really, it's a partnership between Salina NEA and the USD three oh five Board of Education as partners in education, not necessarily adversaries. And in so many districts, USD, the Boards of Education have been painted as adversaries with the Local Teachers Association, and we're wanting to dispel that myth and really move forward with Salina USD three oh five as partners in education and working together. So we're looking at doing some things, maybe having a collaborative forum, where we roll out our platforms, and maybe a collaborative platform between Salina NEA and USD three oh five, and really to send a message to our legislators that we're all on the same team here. And so I appreciate Jonathan's willingness and really his ideas in terms of moving that process forward. So thank you for that.
Bill, I might suggest, when you finally get to where you're ready to communicate to the legislators, I think we've got a communication device right there in front of Jana that has a handle that might be a. Might not, I don't know. Exactly.
Yeah, maybe not. We'll see. We'll see how that goes. We'll talk about that when we get to it. But I do appreciate Jonathan, again, your leadership on that. So other than that, just great start to the school year, two weeks in, and things are going well.
Okay, moving on in our agenda, we need an executive session, starting out with negotiations.
Yes, Madam President, if I could request an executive session for negotiations for fifteen minutes, please.
Okay. Can I get a motion for an executive session for negotiations?
I move that the Board of Education go into executive session at five fifty-five for fifteen minutes for the purpose of discussing employer-employee negotiations. Because if this matter were discussed in open session, it might jeopardize the resolution of the negotiation issues, and that the Board of Education reconvene into open session at six ten in the conference room.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion before we vote? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. So moved six zero. We will adjourn till then.